18th, 2022. We will start, as usual, with our Chaplain Prayer. And Mr. Ralph Dawkins, Chaplain Dawkins, will come forward and please lead us in prayer and in pledges, if you don't mind.
Let us pray. Father, thank you once again for the opportunity to invoke your word through prayer into this gathering of city officials, leaders, and concerned citizens. I pray that these city leaders, that you have given unto them the responsibility to watch over and lead our city in a way that will bring economic prosperity and produce jobs and revenue and help San Angelo to progress and grow. Father, your word declares that we should acknowledge you in all of our ways, and you would direct our paths. You said that if we delight ourselves in you, that you would give us the desires of our heart. So I pray that you would bless them today to work together in unity, to tackle the agenda items, and I pray that you would give them the wisdom, the directions and the instructions on how to lead, manage, and operate this city and all of its departments. May you draw in and attract to our city industry, businesses, corporations that they serve. And lastly, you said that we should pray for those who are in authority over this city. So I pray and lift up the mayor, her staff and assistants, the city council members, the city manager, and every person in department that is instrumental in leading and directing our city. I pray for the chief of police and the entire police force, sheriff's department, the fire chief, the fire departments, and all first responders that serve our city, that they would continue to work and serve and protect our city and the residents. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen. Let us pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and individual.
Thank you.
This morning, we have two proclamations or recognitions, and the first one will be the proclamation of March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. All of you in the audience who are here to receive this, please come forward. An estimated 480,000 children in Texas and an estimated 1% of the San Angelo population have developmental disabilities. Their hopes and dreams do not differ from the aspirations of all citizens: to be self-sufficient, work and earn a living, practice their faith, and help support their community. People with developmental disabilities have unique abilities and experiences that strengthen our city's rich diversity, and throughout our history, these individuals have made significant contributions to make San Angelo a better place for us all. There can be no doubt that San Angelo is stronger when every citizen is able to thrive in their community. Students with developmental disabilities who are included in classroom settings outside of special education are more likely to achieve their full academic potential. When people with disabilities are included in the general workforce, they have an opportunity to earn a competitive wage, work as part of a team, and support the local economy. People with developmental disabilities who are included and active in their community generally live longer, healthier lives, and are more likely to give back to their communities. When inclusion becomes a way of life, San Angelo thrives. In collaboration with MHMR, Concho Valley, the local Intellectual Developmental Disability Authority, or LITA, we dedicate March to raising awareness about developmental disabilities and highlighting the importance of including people of all abilities in every aspect of community life. During this month, all citizens of San Angelo can raise awareness about how classrooms, workplaces, houses of worship, and communities are stronger when they include people of all abilities. At this time, I encourage citizens to come together to increase awareness about developmental disabilities and support full inclusion and equality for all. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 2022 as Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. That's a lot of Ds to say.
It was a lot, wasn't it?
Yeah. And then come forward and speak.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council members. On behalf of My Health, My Resources, Concho Valley, MHMR, we want to thank you and your support for all the things we do to support people. We focus on the abilities, not the disability. And with Concho Valley, we are in community every day. We are working with individuals, providing supports. In fact, last year, we provided services to 940, over 940 individuals with an intellectual disability. We provide supports for families, individuals, and work in the community with providing respite for families, providing transportation for individuals to work, to doctor's appointments, to grocery shopping, and case management, service coordination, advocacy for people working with individuals in the state's four living centers, trying to move them to a less restrictive environment, to the community, and nursing facilities as well. A whole range of things. I did bring today some folks from our basketball team, because we have a great basketball team. And with March being Intellectual Developmental Disability Month, we have this team, and we celebrate with other community centers. And we play against many other community centers up at Big Spring Howard College. It's coming up on the 25th. And I'd like to recognize these folks. This is Brian and Lori. We have Neillian and Cassie. Not only do we have a basketball team, but we have cheerleader sections that do a halftime show, and I think several of these folks are on the cheerleader presentations. So I invite y'all, it's 25th, up at Howard College, come and visit, support the Concho Valley Bobcats. Five years in a row, they were winning before COVID hit, and we haven't played in two years. So we're hoping for the best, but I think we're going to do well. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. We're going to have a picture taken. Yeah, wait a minute. Come on. come forward? Are you the only one today? Well, you're good. We're glad to have you. The National Small Business Development Center SBDC program was legislated via the Small Business Act of 1976 as a program of the U.S. Small Business Administration. State and local governments play a vital role as key partners to leverage resources which complement the SBDC's economic and business development efforts. The Texas SBDCs have provided small business assistance to starting and growing Texas's small businesses since inception. In Texas, 66,702 entrepreneurs were assisted, not arrested, with advising services in 2021. When COVID-19 stay-at-home orders were first issued, March of 2020, the Texas SBDC network immediately pivoted small business advising and training for virtual and in-person delivery. In 2021 alone, Texas SBDCs assisted entrepreneurs with targeted disaster recovery and resilience at almost 148 million in disaster-related capital. Working with its economic development partners, the Angelo State University, Small Business Development Center continues to demonstrate its service, hard work, and continued commitment that has helped small businesses in San Angelo and the surrounding nine-county area to survive, recover, and prosper. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim March 16th as Texas Small Business Development Center Day in San Angelo, Texas, and call this observance to the attention of all of our citizens. Congratulations, and please speak.
I just want to say thank you to Mayor Gunter and the city council and everyone here today. We're very excited to receive this. We've been participating, the city has, in America's Small Business Day for a few years now. And just so everyone is aware, there are SBDCs throughout the nation, and so this is something that is celebrated nationwide with nearly 1,000 centers throughout the United States. And we are just happy to be here in San Angelo, serving our small business clients and in the surrounding counties. We couldn't do it without our economic development partners and our team, which I know I'm here as a loner today, but it's because everybody is out busy, including, well, our student team is actually off on spring break. So we work them very hard. They provide so much work and effort to support our program, and so they're all on vacation this week. So we're excited to continue to serve the community in all ways that we do through advising and training, and we appreciate this acknowledgement.
Thank you. Let's have a picture. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Council has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the city council to non-agenda comments is limited to a statement of specific factual information, recitation of existing policy, and directing staff to place a subject on a future agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience today who would like to come forward and offer public Teresa, I'd like to have you repeat what the process is if people are very unhappy with Suddenlink service, please. What can they do?
We have a webpage that is on our website that outlines the arbitration process. There's forms listed there where you can fill out the forms and ask for arbitration under Suddenlink. Everybody's individual contract prohibits the city from acting on your behalf. You do have to take action individually, and we've helped you do that by listing the process. There's some videos there, as well as the forms to help you do so.
I know this weekend, there were many, and this past week, many individuals, citizens who experienced dramatic problems with their Suddenlink system. Many businesses in the downtown area over the weekend lost all of their credit card capabilities, no phone lines and no credit cards. So they had to ask all their customers to have cash. Problem was, so many people had to go get cash that the ATMs ran out of cash. There are people who are CPAs who have not been able to process, for example, oil and gas information so that they can complete someone's income tax. They've been out of internet service for over nine days. The service that we're getting from Suddenlink is truly unacceptable, and I encourage all citizens to continue to work to make sure Suddenlink understands what poor service will cost them as a business, an individual, and we as a city. It's truly unacceptable. I know what we went through, because we couldn't, we had no phone line, so we couldn't process credit cards, which means no one could call and make reservations or be in contact with anyone at our restaurant, from around 4 o'clock on Friday all the way till 6 o'clock on Monday. No phone service, no credit card processing, and no internet. And I know that there are many other individuals out there in businesses who also went through that same thing this weekend. So please, go online, go to our city's website, and make sure that you understand what you can do to make sure Suddenlink understands their lack of service is not acceptable in this city. Thank you. I'll ask once again, is there anyone here who would like to offer public comment? With none, we'll move into the consent agenda, and I will ask each council member if there's any items that they would like to have pulled from the consent agenda. I'll start with Larry.
No ma'am.
I'd like to pull item M. Harry?
No ma'am.
Tom?
No ma'am.
Tom.
No ma'am.
With that, I will ask that we have a motion to approve all the consent agenda items except for item M. May I have that motion?
So moved.
Harry made a motion, Lucy seconded. Any public comment concerning any consent agenda items? Being none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? With none opposed, consent agenda passes 7-0. Oh, ma'am, I'm sorry, I didn't see you stand up. Please come forward. My apologies. I looked to the left and looked to the right and forgot to look out.
Andrea Burke, and I was just going to ask why we're pulling item M.
Well, because I want some explanations on it, so, and some conversation about it, so the public can understand what's going on.
Okay. Would you like me to fill everybody in?
Well, I'd like John James. I'm assuming he's here.
Happy to answer any questions. I think I do have a couple of slides that have a summary of those projects. So there are two projects in the north tiers area. You can see those both here, two adjacent properties requested the maximum amount of $75,000, and the board recommended funding both of those at their requested amount. And you can see the $150,000 recommended with a little over $2.1 million available in the north.
You have pictures of those two buildings?
I do not. I'm sorry. We had including these on the consent agenda in the past, and they had typically not been pulled off, so we didn't.
I've pulled them every time, but yeah, pretty much every time.
We don't have the full presentation. We can, we could bring those back at a future meeting if that's your request.
No, because then it will hold up the process of approving, and I don't want anybody receiving the funds to be held up on this issue, so, no. But I'd like to make sure we have them, because I think these two projects, 1212 North Chadburn and 1218 North Chadburn, are two properties that certainly need a tremendous amount of work done on them. And the fact that this money exists so that they can do the work as described, as they described in their application, is significantly important and will make a big difference in that block in terms of what that block looks like. So unfortunately, I wish our citizens could see that. Yes, Lucy?
I just wanted to ask, John, for the public, what kind of businesses are, is that 1212 North and 1218 North?
You know, if the applicant's here, then maybe you can answer that better than me. I believe they were.
12 is a vacant building, so is 1218, and what their intent is, is to take down those buildings, clear them. There's, they have to put in new plumbing and electrical, so they're going to clear the properties. They're going to put in new plumbing, new electrical, put down a new slab, and then build a brand-new building on top of that. So where they're really terrible buildings, they haven't been used in a very long period of time, and this will make a very big difference on that block in terms of what that block looks like. So I think there's significant projects.
And I believe the intended uses for those buildings are automotive-related, a tire shop, and another, two buildings adjacent on the same property, but the same property or the same owner is redeveloping both sites with two new buildings. And so here is a summary of all of the requested projects in the south, and you can see the top, the top there are the ones that were recommended for funding by the board. The rest of those were, well, were not recommended funding for your consideration today. We'll have another conversation in the future. The board actually did recommend funding the rest of those with north funds, but that's a different conversation. The board goes through a process, and these projects are ranked and weighed against each other, because, as you know, in the south, we typically get more requests for funding than there is funding available. So you can see the total request there is 509,000, with the available being 143, although you may recall at the last meeting, you approved three projects that the board had recommended. And so those aren't on this list, but have already previously been approved. So total, there was about almost 300,000 available, but well over 500,000 in requests. And so the board ranks these projects with assistance of staff. What they chose to do in this case was recommend funding those top-listed projects, but given the availability of funding, they recommended funding every one of them at 75% of what was requested, again, to stay within the amount of available funding. And you can see that leaves only about $11,000. So they expended, recommended spending, almost all of the funds available in the south for those projects, leaving these remainder of projects with insufficient funding to give those projects funding as well.
I have a question. On 416 South Oaks, it says Concho Christmas, which is a nonprofit. Are those buildings owned by Concho Christmas?
They are not. They were named Concho Christmas because there was an original, my understanding is the original intent was for those to be used for Concho Christmas. They ended up not being used for that, and they're currently owned by a for-profit. They're currently vacant, but the plan with this project is to turn them into occupied space, I believe for art purposes, but not for Concho Christmas.
Yeah, just because you've put it out there on that, and we don't fund nonprofits. So just to be clear with everyone, because I didn't think it was a nonprofit.
Right. And you may notice, some of these projects were split because of the different elements of the project. So for example, Zetman Investments, there's a fire sprinkler portion and a facade improvement. And so to help weigh different pieces of the projects, we split a number of the projects that had different elements. So for that 416 South Oaks, for example, they looked at the facade improvements separately from the non-facade improvements, and that was just part of the evaluation process.
May I? Yes, please, Karen.
I've visited all the properties, and just a minor correction, but 416 South Oaks is occupied.
Oh, it's already occupied?
There is a tenant in that building.
Well, I think that, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Howard Taylor has rent leased that building.
It's a plant to people, is the name of the business, plants for people, plants to people.
I think something's, because I'm quite sure that's leased, but anyway, nonetheless, it's outdoors. It's not that what's happening inside. It's about improving the physical presence of that building, which is good. Yes, Lucy?
Okay, I'm a little confused here, because your recommended funding is 132, 156, and in our paperwork, we're asking to approve 110, 365. So am I making, I mean, did I miss something?
You know what? This slide may be the one we use to present to the board. There was one project, they altered slightly, and so I think that's the difference. We had recommended funding the Zetman Investments facade, 109 South Chadburn, and in the course of the board meeting, the discussion revolved around Zetman Investments needing the sprinkler system to even be able to open, and so what the board did was flip those two. They chose to fund the fire sprinkler currently and then delay the facade improvements until a later phase of that project.
Which is fine, but again, the question is, our paperwork all reflects 110,365. Yours, so what specifically on those, where's the difference between 132 and 110? Is that's the, as you, the Zetman, the 9,000? Because it's bigger than that.
I'd have to go back and look at the numbers. The numbers in your packet are the correct numbers as recommended by the board.
Our information in our packet says 110,000, so it's not just on the agenda, it's in our background information for 110,365. So it includes the 40, it says 46,125, it includes the 21,392, includes the 20, it says 2658, which isn't up there. It includes 22,190, which is different than the 30,000 on the Concho Christmas. You have 31,007. Ours says 22,190.
Yeah, we'll have to go back and check those numbers. My understanding is the ones in the packet on the memo are correct, but I'll have to go back and look at those.
So when we make a motion to approve, we will be approving the 110,365, which is what is in our background information, not what you have there on the slide, just to be clear with everyone. Okay. Then may I have a motion for approval of the total north of 150,000 and the south of 110,365 to be approved for these projects? Is there a motion?
Brenda, should we, should we clear this up before? I know you said you didn't want to delay this, but with the questions we have here, Teresa, is there some way to approve this so that it doesn't delay the projects, but get the correct, how could we do that?
You could do it as the mayor suggested, approving the number that's on the agenda. So approving these projects in the total amount of the 110,365.
I'll make that motion then, Mayor.
Thank you.
That does match the background.
One second. Larry, you seconded. With all of that, is there any public comment? Seeing none, oh, please come forward.
Okay, so I thought that there was going to be a topic of discussion in regards to the tiers money in general, and if I'm stepping out of line, let me know. So as y'all see, you know, on the numbers, the north side has 2 million-plus dollars.
We can't discuss that. That item is an agenda item on the regular agenda, so we can't talk about it right now.
Oh, it's on there. Okay, excuse me.
It is, it's the last, or one of the last items on the regular agenda, so we will get to it.
Get to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for paying attention. All right, with that, we'll take a vote. All in favor of approving the 110,000 for the southern, 110,365 for the south, and 150,000 for the north. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, that motion passes 7-0. We will now move into the regular agenda. Regular agenda, comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We're going to have, our first item on the agenda is a presentation by Charlotte Anderson on Keep San Angelo Beautiful. Please come forward. And I know you have a lot of folks in the audience who's on your board. Would you, would you folks like to come forward and give her support while she makes her presentation? So we can acknowledge you. If you would like to, come forward now. If you want to stand your seat, you're allowed to do that. No one's coming forward. Okay, Charlotte, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor Gunter, City Council, and guests. Keep San Angelo Beautiful would like to thank you for the opportunity this morning to share our accomplishments for the calendar year of 2021 by providing you an overview of our activities. So in 2021, with over 101 events and activities, KSAB impacted approximately 1,921 businesses with 633 volunteers, generating 2,493 volunteer hours for a value of $71,150 to the city of San Angelo in labor. We provide a survey every year at our hazardous.
Is that minimum wage labor, or how did you?
No, ma'am. It's, it's 25,48 an hour, and that's based on an average day of work plus a volunteer hour at an after-hour rate. It's set by the state of Texas. We follow the Keep Texas Beautiful guidelines, and they post that for us every year. You're sure welcome. So we take a survey at our hazardous waste event every year, and we determine our top six areas of interest. They've stayed the same, but rotated a little bit. So recycling, hazardous waste, trash cleanups, planting trees, parks, beautification, and children's education have remained the top six. A few of our programs this year include our junior ambassadors focusing on education, business ambassadors, which are business contacts who share our information with our teams. For volunteers, we have Voice at the Table, which creates awareness, and our We Care program that recognizes those that go above and beyond in our community. So this is some information on our hazardous waste event, which was very successful this year. We had over 100 volunteers representing 36 businesses and included an eco fair with 19 booths. We generated 826 volunteer hours for a value to the community of $23,574. We saw over 420 vehicles handed out trash bags and city water conservation kits. Ella broke her world record of collecting over 8,176 plastic bags, and we recycled over.
Repeat that number?
8,176 plastic trash bags.
And in what area was that?
What she did was, she's participated with us in the past. She's a very young girl that started her environmental activism in third grade from Santa Rita Elementary, and she's collected bags. So as her journey of going on vacations with her parents, they've seen the impact of plastic bags on turtles, on beaches, on the environment, on the oceans. And so her mission is to collect as many plastic bags as possible. And HEB has sponsored her and hosted her in the past where she's collected several bags. And then she reached out to us to participate with our hazardous waste event, which is perfect for her because as people drive through, she has a website and lets them know she's going to be with us, and they bring her just hundreds and hundreds of trash bags. So when they drop off their trash bags, they get a recyclable, reusable bag. So it, it's been a great honor to work with her, to mentor her, to help her on her mission as well. So we're real proud of Ella, and it's Ella Saves the Oceans. If you ever want to look her up, she's really sweet.
You know, we hope that there would be an ability to work with Tech dot on collecting these bags on all of our frontage roads and on the sides of 306 before Tech dot hires their mowers. Because once again, this past, whether it was January or December, I can't remember, we, they mowed without collecting these bags. So where there might have been 1,000 bags, we now had 10,000 particles of plastic bags.
Right. We, we also had two cleanups scheduled in the same time period. Unfortunately, with the weather in the twenties and the thirties and the freezing rain and drizzle, we had to cancel two of our events. But we also assisted at the same time last year. So it's, I think their mowing is at the end of January, and then we're littered through the month of February. And hopefully, we can work on some ways to be proactive next year. And, and that's just getting people out in front of the mowers and picking up bags that have been dropped off, you know, through just negligence. So again, we hope to be, continue to be a part of that. I would like to find a proactive solution, because it doesn't make a lot of sense to keep doing the same thing year after year after year.
It looks so bad.
Without a solution, and it does look bad. So hopefully, we can have an impact on that as well, and the weather will participate with us. Last year, we had, we canceled no events, so little disheartening to know there's work to be done, and we, we had to cancel two this year. So back to that hazardous waste. We recycled over 48,000 pounds of materials, including 31,280 pounds of hazardous waste, 5,000 pounds of shredded documents, 260 pounds of cardboard, 45 car batteries, 900 gallons of oil, and 1,200 pounds of electronic waste, and over 12,805 tires.
We have, I'll ask for that tire number in a minute.
Sure.
Again. But you know, there are people that in this community that have a business that pick up oil, for example, used oil at restaurants, et cetera. Are they participating with you in terms of picking up some of this oil when there's that much?
Our oil provider is Alliant Recovery, and he is a gentleman that I believe he works with the city. But he comes to our events for free, and he sets up and takes all types of oils and other products. So actually, when you drive through, you can bring anything, and he has a drum setup that siphons off straight to his truck. So for him to provide the services for free, you know how much it costs to have that disposal portion done for your business. We're just very grateful for him to offer that service to us. And he's offered it to us at our hazardous waste event this year.
Fantastic.
Yes, ma'am. Karen, did you have a comment? No, 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 okay, okay.
I was just saying 1200, 12,000 plus tires.
Say that again.
Okay, 12,805 tires.
And that's just on this one, or is that for the year, the number you've collected?
So we collected, we had about four different collection days from May to October, which included 15 18-wheelers. Now, these 18-wheelers can hold anywhere from 800 to 1,200 tires, depending on how well they're stacked. It's a beautiful herringbone pattern. And for those that get it, it makes it a lot easier, and we can fill the trucks fuller. But so over that period, May to October, we did 15 trucks, and that equaled 12,805 tires. Very, very proud. So for a six-month effort, that's amazing. I know it's just a start, and we have a lot of work to do. I do get calls on a regular basis about when is the next tire collection. It, it is very costly, but we will have a collection probably in May. And so we'll put that information out as soon as we can get that confirmed with our provider. And then Reliable Tires does the work with us on that. Again, these tires are stripped of the metals, sent to a steel foundry where they make rebar and angle iron products. And then, of course, the tires are chipped into one-inch squares, and they're used for tire-derived fuel. So 100% recycled on that, so real proud of that. So let's go to the next page here. All of that is hazardous waste. And here we go. So to cleanups, we had over 12 cleanups, removing 8,090 pounds of trash on the river, on our highways, at the airport downtown, at the Girl Scout house, Howard College, and in our parks. Our major cleanup last year are the guys in the orange, and that was our fall sweep. We had over 200 participants, which represented 29 different organizations cleaning in nine different areas around the city. We generated 751 volunteer hours at a $21,433 value to the community. And at that event, we picked up over 1,640 pounds of trash. Our best team spirit was Blue Cross Blue Shield, and they were just amazing. Our most interesting item was the City of San Angelo Finance Team led by Patricia Tafoya, and they found a little kitten. You can see in this picture, I'm thinking that might be to your left. The little bitty kitten, it was under a piece of cardboard on the Red Arroyo. No brothers, no sisters, no mom, no dad, and they took the kitty home. So very excited about that. Let's go to how about trees? So we distributed 150 trees on approximately 38 different locations, including 26 SA ISD school campuses, Howard College, Angelo State, Parks and Rec, several private schools, including Trinity Lutheran, Cornerstone, Ambleside, San Angelo Christian Academy, TLC A, TLC Kids Way, YMCA, and the Boys and Girls Club. We also worked with the Lower Colorado River Authority on a project at the airport that just turned out beautiful. Seven people removed 11 tons of rocks and debris and replaced it with beautiful river rocks, regional boulders, and cactus. We provided an irrigation-free beautification project that keeps San Angelo beautiful, maintains throughout the year. We're currently working on three sets of picnic tables with benches with Parks and Rec, and they will be in honor of Gregorio Gutierrez for Connection, Ms. Norma Gilman, Peace Corps biology teacher at some, with SA ISD, retired after 30 years, and great environmentalist. And then Ken Landon for his work with the International Lily Collection. So those are three different areas that will be providing some beautification. They should be, those should be implemented this spring. And our junior ambassadors, they are just so sweet. So we've provided over 3,850 recycling and environmental lessons on Earth Day, America Recycles Day, to over 1,927 students at 18 SA ISD elementary campuses through the YMCA After School Program, and to our six private schools, Girl Scouts, American Heritage Girls, Children's Fair participants, students at the Boys and Girls Club. And then, of course, we have students that are in the trias competition that reach out every year, and we work with them as well to mentor them and give them the education and materials they need to have a great presentation. Our KSAB junior ambassadors, they do receive special lessons. They participate in cleanups. They take a pledge to never litter, to recycle when they can. They get a certificate, they get business cards, stickers, booklets, and an environmental planner. We are planting seeds and building our future environmental leaders, and they are just amazing. Okay, and our business ambassadors recruit employees for team-building exercises and service hours. Our number-one fan is First Community Federal Credit Union. They have sent staff to every single one of our events. They participated and volunteered at every event, and they are a sponsor of our children's program. So we're really grateful for them. Our Voice at the Table is a monthly collaborative event where we introduce KSAB to potential business ambassadors to recruit volunteers, donors, and recently, a board member. We've hosted 11 groups with over 104 guests representing 64 businesses. We also have a We Care program where we recognize those that go above and beyond to make a difference in our community. We select one a month and have featured 12 this year. So a few of our activities, this is Angelo State University, our Earth Day, and we probably visited with maybe 250 or 300 students at that event. And our Star Spangled Banner pops concert, we handed out 1,450 fans and 125 trash bags. And we also came back and cleaned up the Chadbourne Bridge after the event. So that was beautiful, beautiful event and a lot of fun. Another great accomplishment this year is our Keep San Angelo Beautiful coffee. In an effort to address donation opportunities at our events, provide a way for those that cannot volunteer to support KSAB and develop a marketing tool. Instead of an annual fundraiser, KSAB met with local roster to develop an exclusive gourmet coffee blend. We introduced our KSAB coffee at Christmas at Old Fort Concho and to date have taken donations for 525 bags. Proceeds go to Change the Landscape in San Angelo. Our packaging is biodegradable, and we include recycling tips on the back. It was very well received and enjoyed by the many hundreds of people that we saw at Christmas at Fort Concho. So they just loved it. And we provided you a sample today. So this past year, a little bit on recognition, we received our Gold Star status from Keep Texas Beautiful. We also received the Governor's Community Achievement Award of Excellence for our 2020 submission. We're also featured in San Angelo Lifestyle Summer Edition Magazine and are grateful for our city proclamations for Earth Day and America Recycles. Our work with the Chamber Leadership San Angelo's 38th Class was a terrific team-building opportunity. Our class raised close to $1,000 for rice for St. Paul's Presbyterian Church. And then we renovated a home that kept getting rained out and rained out and rained out. So we took the lady about $350 worth of groceries to hold her over till we could get to the renovations. But we did just a fantastic job, and I was happy to be a part of that. So in closing, we really want to thank the City of San Angelo for allowing us to be a conduit to the community, to provide environmental activities, to engage our families, our students, and our citizens. We too share the joy of our volunteers and let them know they're always wanted, needed, and valued, and we are grateful for them and all of those who choose to keep San Angelo beautiful. So thank you again. We've provided you a sample of the coffee, our recent article in TML, the Texas.
Municipal.
Texas Town and City, actually.
Yes, Town and City, I'm sorry, it's new for me. But very excited we got that published about the tires. We will be applying for an award with them as well regarding the tires. My strategy was give them a story first, and then we'll see if we can push that over the finish line. But please, if you can, if you would like, follow, and share on Facebook. We're running at about 1,400 followers. We're real excited about that. Our next event is April the 2nd. It's the Texas Trash Off Day with Don't Mess with Texas. It's the largest cleanup day of the year, and we provided a flyer for you on that as well. And then our children's planner this year in recycling is out of this world, and so that's our theme. They've got aliens, spaceships, trash all in space, a few activities. The, the planner has friendly reminders and tips on the back of the cover. So that, another was an HEB green bag grant provided by Keep Texas Beautiful. So if there are no further questions?
I do, I have a couple of comments.
Yes, ma'am.
And one would be the following. So Keeps San Angelo Beautiful is an important, necessary group to help keep San Angelo beautiful. But so much of your work is because citizens and visitors to our city have no respect for our city and think nothing of throwing the trash out and creating an ugly sight for anybody. I want you to, this is your opportunity to talk to the citizens, and what do you want to say to them?
So to the citizens that think we are a playground for their trash, real Texans don't litter, and we don't appreciate it. We care about our community, we care about our environment. We've received so many accolades on all of our beautiful achievements through art, through our downtown historic preservation. It's, it's a shame that people would come and not leave it better than they found it. So we would urge, urge our residents, which our volunteers are just amazing, to continue to, to help us make an impact. We care, and that's what it's all about. And I can tell you that the volunteers never stop. This last event, our Fall Sweep, on the Wednesday, we had 105. And by Friday, we had 186 people that registered to clean up at that event. So as long as those numbers keep growing, we'll keep doing the work, creating awareness. Our, our TV personnel are very kind to let us come on, you know, a couple of times a month to continue to get that message out. We appreciate all the help we get. But yeah, for, for our guests and visitors, we just want to remind them that real Texans don't litter.
So our river is not a trash dump.
Oh, my God, it's just incredible. It's absolutely beautiful. And we do have water conservation and water PDFs where we talk about where our trash goes, lakes, rivers, and streams.
But where does it come from?
Right, absolutely. Hopefully, our younger generation will plant the seeds and get them engaged and work on. Hopefully, our younger generation will plant the seeds and get them engaged and work on dragging the parents, the brothers, the sisters, the siblings, the neighbors, to all get out and do their part to make a difference. So we'll all work together and we will make an impact on our beautiful city.
Just one moment. Yes, Daniel?
I do want to add as well that you may inadvertently be polluting as well. We have, the great majority of vehicles in our city are trucks. People that keep trash in the back of their trucks, you see them on the loop, they're flying out. If you have a bed cover, wonderful. If you don't, look at the back of your truck. If you have trash there, it's going to fly out. Get rid of it. But I get sick and tired of seeing that also on the loop is trash just flying out of the back of pickup trucks.
And we want to add to that, Republic Trash Trucks. They need to make sure those Republic Trash Trucks are covered because they carry a lot of trash and it flies like crazy. So we just want to remind everybody again, if you see a Republic Trash Truck driving down Loop 306 or some other area, let us know so we can make sure the people who manage and oversee Republic are aware of one of the big problems we have.
Yes, Lucy?
I just want to make a quick comment, Charlotte, and to the citizens is our neighborhoods. Our neighborhoods are, get a little bit out of whack whenever the wind is blowing, the trash is being dumped. They don't bag their trash. It goes straight down the road or to other people's yards. So my comment to them is bag your trash and if it falls out of the truck or whatever, pick it up. Because I had one constituents actually tell me, I go down the street in my neighborhood picking up the trash that is left behind.
Thank you. Harry?
Just a real quick comment. I want to say thank you to Charlotte. She's absolutely the right person to be in this position at this time. We've done a lot of good work with the board and I'll continue to be on the advisory board as long as you need me. I think this is a program that will continue to garner accolades, not only in the city, but also at the state level because we are making a difference. The young people are very, very excited to be part of these programs and the citizens want these services because we see the number of them coming every time we have a recycling event. So thank you and we'll continue the good work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlotte.
Thank you.
We will move to Item B, First Reading and Public Hearing of an Ordinance Amending the Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2021 and Ending September 30, 2022 for Reimbursed and Capital Expenditures. Tina, you're on.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, Daniel. Oh, no, Daniel. Tina Dersky, Director of Finance, have a budget amendment for you this morning. The first one is for our Seal Coat Project in the amount of $1.7 million. That's a project involved with the county. Second is to pay the final interest.
Wait a minute, go back for the county. You said for the county. Why is it the county?
I think there's an interlocal agreement. I'll ask Patrick to come forward and explain that.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. This year, the county had reached out to us with the opportunity to join in on our Seal Coat bid this year to hopefully garner some economies of scale, bring in their quantities as well as our quantities and bid those out as a combined unit. We did see that in the bids that came back. So the county looked at those bids, they do want to participate in our chip seal program. So what this does is it's going to be the city's contract, but the county portion, the county will monitor and inspect their own chip seal applications. The city is just making the payment to the contractor for that. So in order to do that, we need the budget amendment to receive that money from the county, put it into our expense budget, and reimburse ourselves for that expense.
We're not paying for the county's project.
No, ma'am.
We're just using it as a, to build up the impact.
No, ma'am. The county has their own funds that is paying for this.
Thank you.
All right.
Next budget amendment is $893,000. That was the final interest payment that was made for the Ford Ranch, which you'll remember that we closed out in mid-February. So we just need to, that amount is still sitting in fund balance from the sales of parcels at the ranch. We just need to pull it up into the budget line item.
And so at this point, all interest and debt has been paid on the Ford Ranch, is that correct? There's no more?
I hope you never see this again.
Thank you.
And finally, budgeting for auction revenue and insurance proceeds so that Ryan Kramer can purchase additional vehicles and equipment.
Okay, so we're giving him $205,000 and there's $125,000 that we received from the auction and insurance.
Yes, ma'am.
But we're expensing 205. So what's the difference between those two and where does that money come from?
An additional 80,000 from the General Equipment Replacement Fund's fund balance. So he's pulling 80,000 out of fund balance.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Questions for Tina?
Move of approval, Mayor is presenting.
Motion by Tommy, a second by Harry. Any public comment? Harry, no public comment. We will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, Item B passes 7-0. Item C, Consider Resolution Authorizing an Application for Financial Assistance from the Texas Water Development Board for Water System Improvements, Expressing Official Intent to Reimburse Costs of Said Projects and Making Certain Findings in Connection Therewith. Well, that's glory within. There with.
If you don't mind, I'm going to make a presentation for Items C, D, and E as they all revolve around the Hickory Project and the expansion.
I'll go ahead and read D and E.
Okay, thank you.
Consider awarding the following agreements based upon scoring criteria as set forth in the Competitive Seal Proposal Procurement Method Negotiated Scope and Contract Pricing Using $12,966,537 from the Water Capital Fund Balance and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. One, WU-05-22 Hickory New Production Wells to Hydro Resources Mid-Continent Incorporated in the amount of $8,50881. And two, WU-06-22 Hickory Treatment Plant and Well Filled Improvements to PLW Waterworks LLC in the amount of $53,01915. And Item E, Consider Awarding Task Order Number Three Under WU-04-19 Engineering Services for Water System Improvements to the Hickory Groundwater Supply Development to Improtech Hibbs and Todd Incorporated in the amount of $2,885,250 and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. And Allison, you are on.
Okay, thank you for reading all of that. So as I mentioned, I'm going to be doing a presentation that goes over all three items as they all relate to the Hickory Expansion Project. We want to make sure you all have the full picture. Sorry, Brian. And so I'm just going to briefly go over what the Hickory Expansion Project is. It is the drilling of five additional wells. Currently, we have 15 wells. This will also increase the pump station capacity. The pump station is located out in Melvin, Texas, or the Ford Ranch formerly. And it'll also increase the treatment capacity and the treatment plant is located here in San Angelo at the water treatment plant facility. This will give us the ability to pump and treat 12 million gallons. Current capacity is 8 million gallons per day. So this increases the reliability from the Hickory and I'm going to highlight it reliability because I want to, as we get further in the presentation, talk about what we're doing to make this system more reliable.
Do you want to stop real quick on, just for one comment, on the drilling of the five additional wells? Just to be clear, that is the final five wells that we are allowed to drill on the Hickory offer?
There's actually additional slots for additional wells to be drilled if that becomes necessary. But what this allows with the drilling of these five wells, we will be able to pump and treat our permitted amount. So in the event, much later down the road, if for some reason we needed to go drill another well, I don't foresee that. We've engineered and had our design consultant look at this so that we can pump the permitted amount. Anything above that would just give us more downtime in the existing wells that we have right now or the ones that we have in operation.
We have the ability to drill one more well, which we're not-
I believe it's two.
Two.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
In addition to the Hickory Expansion System, we will be adding two new 2 million gallon clear wells. The clear well is what holds the final treated water at the water treatment plant before it's sent out to the elevated storage and to the distribution and ultimately to our citizens' homes. The existing clear well that we have today is a singular clear well. It was constructed in 1947. It's concrete structure that has lapsed its timeline or its timeframe and that it just needs to be replaced. As you can, as I reminded you at the previous council meeting, we did use a competitive seal proposal procurement method. And so what we're looking for as far as timeline is if you award the contracts today, we hope to begin construction as soon as possible, April, May of this year. And the anticipated completion of this expansion project with everything that's kind of highlighted up here is July of 2024. So this is the three items that are before you today. One is to seek a, or to adopt a resolution seeking additional funding not to exceed 14 million, and I will explain why we're at 14 million in a minute. We are looking to award contracts for the actual contractors. WO-522 is the new wells. So that is only the drilling aspect of these five additional wells and that's the $8.5 million. And then the WO-622, the Hickory Treatment Plant and Well Filled Improvements is everything outside of drilling. So it's the roadways, it's the electrical system, pump upgrades, treatment capacity, clear wells, basically everything but drilling. And then finally is awarding Task Order Three to Improtech Hibbs and Todd. This will cover construction phase services. So for those contracts, they will provide a resident project representative, which is inspections, and post-construction services, O and M manuals, as-bills, and constructions taking, as well as they coordinate the regulatory work with Texas Water Development Board, TCEQ, those type of entities. So with the resolution for Texas Water Development Board, we are, we originally received a $56 million loan from Texas Water Development Board in 2019. After procuring the construction contracts, we are about $13 million short of being able to proceed with those contracts. We are asking for additional funding from Texas Water Development Board for a low-interest loan in an amount not to exceed 14 million, and that is because we have issuance costs, fees, those type of things, just closing costs to borrow money from Texas Water Development Board. So that's why we're asking for an amount not to exceed 14. What we are doing with these agenda items is we are using Water Capital Fund Balance to cover that 13 million in the interim. And once we receive the funding, hopefully fall of 2022, we would reimburse ourselves for the fund, or reimburse the fund balance so that we can utilize those dollars for street programs and other water utility projects that we have in the works.
Is there any risk that we would not get the money?
We feel very confident and this is already a project that Texas Water Development Board has seen approved with a $56 million loan. It's in the state water plan. We feel very confident in getting funding from Texas Water Development Board. So how we get a little bit closer to trying to backtrack into why we need an additional $13 million? Ultimately, we went out and procured those two construction projects and what you see on the far left is the original proposal amount or what those contractors submitted. So you can see that the new wells were 8.576 million, the new, or the treatment plant expansion and wellfields were 53.2. So those were the original proposal amounts and y'all allowed us at the previous council meeting to start negotiating with those contractors. And so the middle section you will see is the new negotiated proposal amounts. We were able to save $76,000 on the drilling aspect. There was no scope change with that, with that contract. And that's just due to it's designed for a certain capacity and so that we can pump the 12 million gallons. So we can't drill the wells any shallower. We don't need to narrow any casing or anything like that. We want to make sure that we can pump and treat the 12 million gallons. But we did have some savings as we negotiated with that contractor. The next one is the treatment and wellfield. So originally 53.2, we were able to negotiate down to 53 and some change, so ultimately saving $223,000 through those negotiations. But I would like to point out that we actually increased the scope as a part of those negotiations. So we didn't take anything away from the contract, we actually increased it. One of those items is to cover the additional land clearing needed for Encore. So how AEP serves the San Angelo area with power and the pole provider, Encore is that power and pole provider in McCullough County and in the area of the wellfield. And so we will be bringing back to council authorization to have Encore come expand their system within the ranch. And so that's just installing new power lines and power poles to supply the new wells. But what that allows is PLW is able, they're already clearing for the roadway and the pipeline work. So we were able to add the right-of-way clearing for the electrical system as a part of that, as well as add a standby generator at the booster pump station. I don't want to remind anybody of February of 2021, but what we did experience there is we were not able to access the Hickory system. We had no power at the wellfield. And with this expansion project, we will be able to, we will have five portable generators that can hook up to wells themselves, as well as we've added the standby generator at the pump station so that we can power that system even without an electrical, without the electrical grid.
Didn't Encore come through for us in February?
They did.
So we were able to get the water we needed to help build up the water pressure during that storm.
Yes, but they weren't able to do that until like three or four days into already losing water. So by the time we were able to get Encore to power up the wellfield, that is when we were trying to replenish our reservoirs and our storage facilities. We were already, half the city was without water. So with those, the negotiated proposal cost is the $61.8 million. The existing $56 million loan that we have with Texas Water Development Board allows for $4.8 million to go towards these construction contracts, leaving the 12,966,537 to be utilized from fund balance for now, seeking additional Texas Water Development Board funding and reimbursing those fund balances.
You want to remind us again when we think we will be notified of our ability to secure the $14 million? What's the timeline?
I believe that we were looking at closing in fall of 2022. And then finally, for Item E, is Task Order Three with Improtech Hibbs and Todd or EHT. As I stated previously, this is for construction phase services for both those contracts, for the drilling and all the improvements that we will see here in San Angelo as well in McCullough County. They provide all the post-construction services, as-bills, O and M manuals, everything that we need as a part of this expansion project. They also do construction staking and that task order is $2.8 million and it is already funded by the previous loan. So there's no additional funding needed through this or for this contract.
On what that picture is?
That is the Hickory Treatment System that you see on the left. So that is inside the big CMU block building over near Paint Rock Road or Avenue L. So this is the inside of the treatment facility, kind of at the front of the plant. So with that, I, we still need an individual vote on each item. And so I've made three slides for the three different items and have a recommendation for each one. But this ultimately, the first one is for Item C and it is to approve the application and resolution with Texas Water Development Board.
Do I have a motion for Item C?
I'll move.
Tommy's moved, and Harry has seconded that Item C. Do we have any public comment on the Item C on the agenda? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of Item C, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes 7-0. Item D?
Yes, we have, our recommendation is to authorize the contract with Hydro Resources for $8,50881 and to authorize the contract with PLW Waterworks for $53,0915. This will use the fund balance- This will use the fund balance for a portion of this contract until Texas Water Development Board funding is available.
Do I have a motion for approval of item D?
I'll move.
So I'll move by Harry, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All in favor of item D?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0.
I'm not sure.
Item E?
Yes, this one is, our staff recommends the contract be awarded, or task order, not a contract, task order, for Improtech, Hibbs, and Todd be awarded at $2,885,250.
Do I have that motion?
I'll move.
So I'll move by Harry, seconded by Tommy, or maybe the reverse? Okay. Public comment? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. We are going to take a 10-minute break, and we'll be back at basically five minutes till 10. Evan, I have all council members present, so we will move into item F. Discussion and direction to staff on possible changes to the distribution of North and South tax increment reinvestment zone tiers. John, you're on.
Thank you. At their most recent meeting, the tiers board made a recommendation to change how the tiers funds are basically collected and then split up between the two zones. Or I shouldn't say two zones, there, there's only one zone, and that's kind of a misconception among some folks. The North and South tiers are not two separate tier zones under the state law. If they were, then the segregation of funds would be complete. Basically, you couldn't move funds from one to the other. But as it stands, the, the tiers was created as one individual zone. And within the rules for that zone, we established this split between North and South. And so money that, revenue, tax revenue, property taxes that come in from the North stay in the North, and property tax revenue that comes in from the South stays in the South. And so the South funds are used for South projects and North for North projects. That's how it has been and how it currently is. But that's the, the change that the board is recommending. Just a couple of maps here in case there are questions about where the boundaries fall. But this is the North tiers. You can see sort of that donut hole in the middle. State law limits the amount of residential property that can be within a tiers. And so that mostly residential area was left out to, to meet that state law requirement. So it basically goes up Chadburn and then Bryant, and then up including the new, or the North Walmart area. And then the South tiers is largely downtown. And so that's, that's the area of it. So as I said, historically, the revenues were split, North state in North, South state in South. And projects can only be funded, you know, South projects only with South funds. There is an exception to that. If the board recommends by a three-quarters majority that funds be used from one and moved to the other for a project, that can be done. It does require a three-quarter majority of both the tiers board and the city council in order to use funds across the boundaries. So what the tiers board recommendation is, in short, is to take all of those existing funds. There's about, as I mentioned earlier, there's almost none left, just 10,000 or 15,000 that would remain in the South, and about 2 million in the North. They would take those funds, combine them into one pot, and then split them 50-50, half to the North, half to the South. And then in future years, that same 50-50 split would apply. So instead of money earned in the, in the North staying in the North and South staying in the South, it would all be put into one pot at the beginning of the year and then split 50-50. So under their recommendation, there would still be North funds that could only be used in the North and South funds in the South, but the split would be that 50-50 split. And that would end up giving a little more money to the South and a little bit less to the North over time. So here's just a brief, this is the financial report that was given to the board at their last meeting, so its numbers as of January 31st. So as you'll see, that bottom line number for the South here is about 250,000. So that does not yet include the projects that you just approved today. It also doesn't include the projects that you approved at your last meeting. And I won't go through all-
Why do we not have a current updated since?
Well, this gets updated every, monthly. And so the February 31st, or February 28th, sorry, report will be coming out later this month. Those usually come out about a week before our tiers board meeting. And so we just don't have that. This is the most recent report that we, that we have. You can see the revenues are about 437,000, at least for this year, in the South tiers. And you can see some of the expenses that have gone. I can come back to this if there are questions. And then, so in the North, it's about 705,000, or 707 total revenue. And so you can see that's a little bit higher, so 707 versus the 437. So a little bit more, quite a bit more revenue that comes into the North versus the South. Are there questions?
If I may. And those numbers that you just mentioned, those are for this year alone?
That's correct. So the, that's the, the revenue anticipated for this current year. So every year, again, next year, we would expect another, another 437,000. It goes up a little bit every year.
Well, you also have a beginning balance.
Okay.
Remember, you have, it's new revenue plus existing balance. And that's the reason that Northern tiers, see, because they had a beginning balance of 2.4 million.
So that's why you have, you can't just look at the new numbers. You got to look at existing. Understood.
Beginning, just like in your checking account.
So I guess the correct question is, on an annualized basis, what does that look like by zone?
Well, that's your property tax dollar line, because that's, at the end of the year, the appraisal district gives the new numbers.
And so I think this next slide answers your question. The current split is 705,000 to the North, 437 to the South. If we instead had taken that money and split it equally 50-50, it would be the 571,000 to each, each of the areas. And so as you can see, the, the South would get, you know, about 140,000 more than they would otherwise, and the North would get about 140,000 less than they would otherwise.
Lucy, please.
John, why is it that the North has more money than the South?
Well, let me tell you, because I think I'm the only one here who was in existence when the North, this tiers thing was approved. And it was approved for the following reasons and done this way. The initial intent was the following, that the Northern tier zone benefited from, and the creation of the tiers was done because there was a big piece of land in the North that Walmart bought and was going to build on. So when they built on it, that was the beginning of a huge impact to the Northern tiers, because they benefited from all of the strip center, the Walmart being created. The intent initially was, in the Southern tiers, you had Shannon Hospitals, whose real estate at that point in time was on the tax rolls. So the North was to benefit from the Walmart and the increases in the development there, as well as the benefit of whatever might developed on Bryant Boulevard. The South was to benefit from not only Shannon Hospital, but the anticipated growth of Shannon Hospital. The problem is that after the tiers was created, Shannon took their property, all of their real estate to nonprofit status. So initially, you also lost dollars because Shannon Hospital took all of their real estate off the market, if you will, nonprofit status. So even though the intent was to better balance the North versus the South, and we even debated back then about, truly, do you want to be calling this North versus South and, and starting to put citizens against citizens or, you know, splitting the North versus the South? And so, but that is the reason you have North versus South, and that's the reason for the differences in the revenue. And of course Bryant Boulevard was included in the Northern section. And you know how much development has happened on Bryant Boulevard on the East side. So that's where the income comes from.
My next question, and I know that it's because it's not in the zoning, but why did they not include the Walmart on the South side?
We tried to do that. You would have had, we would have had to create another tier zone. And the problem with that is, again, as John just said, you cannot, you can only have a certain percentage of that real estate that is non-residential. So if you start taking a look at going south, a lot of that district would have been heavy residential. You didn't, they wouldn't consider just blocking out, and the city council back then voted not to do that and not to create another tier zone, because you would have had to create another tier zone because as you went further south on Chadburn, you went through huge residential area.
I know that this isn't the first time that this has been brought up to combine. What was the reason that they turned it down previously, that they did not want to combine the, the funds?
Let me just give you a little history on, so when I was president of tiers, I was the first tiers president. And one of the first requests I had is when we were redoing the new library downtown. And they were short $140,000 to do what would have been the West part and that whole sidewalk area on South Irving, because it had a tremendous slope. It was dangerous. It was crazy. It was, and it was going to be expensive to do it. So I asked that there be consideration for those funds coming from the North. And it was an adamant, I went before city council then and asked for that request. We got it passed, but we got it passed. It was very emotional, a lot of anger, a lot of disappointment. And the people who were on the board at that point in time, representing the North, absolutely would not stand up before city council and speak. Even though they voted in the tiers board meeting to do that, they wouldn't, even though they were sitting in the audience that day, would not come forward and talk before city council to get this, get that approved, those $140,000. In addition, the Southern tiers, or Downtown San Angelo Inc., came up with the money to fund creating a tier zone, because the city did not have the 30-some thousand dollars to, that was required in order to create this tier zone. So Downtown San Angelo Inc. raised the $30,000 to fund the creation of the tiers. But when money started to flow in, the South had to pay the North back the 140-some thousand dollars for that sidewalk. And they demanded that, that when it was approved, the $30,000, the North, the South would get reimbursed that $30,000, and that money would go to Downtown San Angelo Inc. The North demanded that that be split, and they get 15,000 back. Downtown would get, or the South would get 15. This has been very contentious from the very beginning, very beginning. It has been a very emotional issue, and it's one of the reasons why I strongly support having a town hall meeting to discuss this with the people in the North instead of just passing it at a city council level. Those citizens have a hard prob, have a hard, have a difficult time coming to city council and talking through it because it becomes a North versus a South issue. We need to have a town hall meeting so that, and it doesn't mean we still wouldn't support doing it ultimately, but we need the, people in the North to have an opportunity to talk through this and ask their questions, ask, or explain their issue, their concerns, whatever. Again, it doesn't mean we won't end up doing it, but I think we need an opportunity for them to be able to speak. It just, that's all. I'm telling you, this thing has been contentious from the very beginning, particularly because we start talking North versus South. So it's, becomes an issue of our money versus your money.
So even though the library benefited both the North and the South, they still, I mean, it was still contentious?
That was my big message. Everyone will be using this library.
Yeah.
We need to support, we need to complete this library project. Many, many people will be using it. And as you know, that library has become very important. Many people use it. It has been a great success, and it's been a great success at a time period when people say, well, you can buy all your books online. No one goes to a library anymore. We'll talk to the library people and find out how many people use that library. They've done a terrific job of making it very appealing to new things in the marketplace in terms of what's happening in, in education, et cetera. It's been a big bonus. But again, I've lived through this for many, many, many years. And I, and I, doesn't mean I won't support doing it, but I want to have and believe we should have a town hall meeting to allow people to express their issues, concerns, or even perhaps ideas how it could better be done. And I also think that many people in the North are nervous about this and aren't quite sure what it means in terms of opportunity for them. We need to do a better job of getting the North to use the money, because from Loop 306 North, there's lots of improvement projects that should happen and would make a big difference. But we got to work hard at getting those people to apply for it. Again, that does not mean I wouldn't ultimately support it, but we need a town hall meeting for those individuals to be able to speak their minds and feel like they have a voice in this decision.
Question and a comment?
Yes, Karen.
I came here today prepared to fight for the North. So, Madam Mayor, you've saved me a, a long speech. Thank you for that, and thank you for your explanation. I just want to clarify, the original intent was to encourage reinvestment within the zones. Is that, is that correct? And I wholeheartedly agree that there are voices that aren't being heard, and I don't want them to be neglected. I think there's an education gap, and I'm not sure how to overcome that, but perhaps the town hall would accomplish that mission. I can see a place for the Chamber of Commerce, for the Small Business Development Center, ASU, to participate also for our own economic development group. So I support your recommendation. Thank you. Lucy?
I have a question. If we do have a town hall meeting, how would we get the North business owners to be aware of this meeting, for them to attend?
Well, we're going to have to work with various groups. I would suggest using, working with Shirley Spears and AAACP, but there's other organizations that we could use.
To get the word out.
To get the word out. And I also say that we need to do it on a timely basis. So I would like to consider doing it within the next two weeks, the next 10 days if possible. We need to do it as soon as possible so we can move forward on these projects if, if, if it works out that way. But we need a town hall meeting. So with that, do I have somebody who wants to make a motion to do that?
I make a motion.
Yes.
So, I got questions for-
Well, we, you can speak, Stephen, after we make a motion a second, and then you can speak at that point. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
So before we go forward, just as long as I understand it right, we're looking at just splitting what we have there, correct? How much are we moving south, John?
There's a little over, it's about 2.1 million. So basically, we would take what's in the pot right now, about 2 million, and divide it evenly, a million each to North and South. And then in future years, as the revenue came in, it would also be split 50-50.
So we'll do that. As far as, it's not geography-based, it's just going to be revenue-based. But I mean, questions I've asked you over the past few days, me and Hebert, you know, if you look at the revenue coming from the South versus the revenue coming from the North, yeah, we got, we got to move this because there's people down South that need some money and some funds. But I've had many, many phone calls from people in the North, and I will go back to, you know, to be honest, north of the loop, we've done a poor job of educating those people on what they can come do. All right? And I mean, to it, you've answered the question on that. My question is, is there a max on what some of these people get? Is that 75,000?
That's right.
Because that was a concern, because we've had some people, we've heard about some projects that are coming in, and we don't want somebody subsidize their whole new renovation project that have the means to afford it through tiers funds, okay? I think there's a priority there. There's some consistency issues about, I saw one today on pavement and asphalt. I know some people asked for paving other parking lots, and that didn't, was not approved. But I saw one today that was approved, and there's been some Caliche lots that have been approved. So I have some questions over consistency, but I think that's irrelevant to the fact of moving the money.
Well, that's the reason I think we have to have it, because there's a town hall too. But we also have to be consistent, to your point. We've said over a period of two to three years, no signs will be approved. If you can't afford your sign, no money will go towards signs. We have said no money will go to parking lots. If you want to do landscape, the money goes to landscape, but not to putting down a parking lot. And the question mark is, you know, all of a sudden, we're going to do this, and then we're going to do that. But we've told people in the past, no, we're not going to do this, and we're not going to do that, but then we do it. And we've got to be more consistent in terms of what we say, the rules and regulations. And we've got to be more consistent in terms of what we say the rules and regulations are, what we end up approving. It's just not. It's, depends if we like somebody or like the project. We can't be doing it. There ought to be more rules, regulations, whatever you call it.
Well, we'll look for some consistency there. But one thing I was talking to Yolanda about also, Franco, was, you know, now the Kent Quick and the Huddle House are going to fall into this north tier zone.
That's right.
Just perfectly on the line. So there's additional revenue. So I don't want anybody to be afraid that we're moving the availability. But, you know, my whole point is, and this is where I'm going to go to, if we need to move money, it takes a supermajority at the tiers vote, and also a supermajority or three-quarters majority here at council. Somebody just can't do that with an overrun. All the north people can't just rally up and take money from the south without input from the south or back and forth. If that's already in place, I'm good with this. But protection over the funds, make sure everybody's treated fairly. But my biggest concern here is consistency on what we approve going north and south.
Well, and I think, go ahead, Daniel.
Mayor, just for clarification purposes, so the $571,000 that would be split if this happens, if the north doesn't spend that 571, the remainder carries over, is that correct, into a fund, fund balance?
That's correct. And that's how, that's how the north zone now has over 2 million, because each year, not all of it gets spent, so it keeps building over time.
I just want to make sure that's correct.
Chadburn is, is from, as we all know, from the loop north to the Coliseum has traveled a lot. It is a site that people see. It is an image of our city. We need to do a much better job of helping to improve that corridor from north to south, and make sure that we have our best foot forward, and that those individuals on that northern corridor understand what the opportunity is, what they could be doing. Simple things that could make that corridor look a lot better and best foot forward. So I think we owe the citizens in the north, first and foremost, an opportunity to show how they could use the money and improve their property. You know, some people say, but if I improve my property, then my taxes go up. It's a funny negative thing that some people think about improving their property. We need to make them better understand, yeah, might, but you might also be able to sell the property for a lot more money if you improve the property. It's a process, and I believe we need to do that.
Another question, if I may.
Yes, Karen.
So, to my mind, the proposed split and the issue of education are two different things. And they're not independent of one another by any means. But to Mr. Valenzuela's point, he questioned the proposed split and the value of it. How, what oversight would there be to ensure that that overage in any part of the zone, north or south, is retained to serve that zone? If that, if that makes any sense? What would stop us from, again, asking for money from here to go over there, or vice versa?
I think once you start the process, that's what you start worrying about. And they, they keep the numbers pretty good. Today, we saw a problem. And, but, you know, we need to make sure that the accounting is correct, that we keep the correct accounting and balance and accounting.
Basically, what I was pointing out as well, and Karen, to your point, the 571 would carry over and be kept in fund balance for the use only for the north. And it can't be, the discussion in the future can't be, well, we need that money too, they're not using it. So if there's a split, it's an understanding that it's 571, 186. Of course, that'll grow on an annual basis based on values. But it's got to be understood that we're not going to pull from the fund balance on the north in the future, if that's the case.
I think that's very important.
Yeah, and I, you know, again, I think we have, go ahead, Harry.
And this, this council almost six years now, and we've consistently had conversations about the north and south zones. And I get citizens from both areas call on a regular basis. I think this could be a good way for us to manage this. But I will have to say this. We have got to do a better job of letting the people in the north zone know the advantage of these tiers funds, so that we can get them to improve their property. If we do that, we don't have to worry about the 571 being in balance, because they'll spend it every year. But we've got to do a better job of doing that. I think this town hall meeting is something that we, we should do. I think it's, it's something that we can do, have some education on, on some of the property owners north of the loop. We've got to do a better job. And that's what I told an individual this last week. What can we do to this? And I said, you guys in the north zone have got to start educating your business owners. Otherwise, you're going to consistently be talking about, well, there's more money in the north zone than there is in the south.
Thank you. Okay, so do I have a motion to not, I don't know how I need to say this, a motion to not approve today's, but to give direction to staff to pull together a town hall meeting, so that we can further discuss this issue? Do I have that as a motion?
Oh, moved.
Do we need a motion?
I was going to say, maybe we just, I don't think we need a motion. Let's just direct staff to have a town hall meeting.
Okay, so there's no motion required here. But, wait a minute. Should not be approving anything from the south, from the north, right now, till we have a town hall meeting.
I mean, Mayor, as far as the recommendation's been made by the tiers board, it's something that in the near future will have to be decided, because the recommendation's on the table. But what you're saying, Mayor, is let's get that input first before we make, y'all make that decision. But that is something that we'll be coming forward.
Yeah, because we, I mean, we don't know that that money will, I mean, we just need to have a town hall meeting before any further action is taken on this issue.
Table this motion until we get the town hall meeting and bring it back in a future agenda item, right?
Correct, agreed.
Do we need a motion to do that? I can do that.
No, she said we don't.
There's no action item on the table today. We, so there's nothing you need to table. You just need to direct us to have a town hall meeting.
Yes. I am, no, I am. Yes, Tommy. I'm just trying to get to all of you first, okay? One thing at a time.
Come on, Brenda.
Step down. Tommy.
I have a question. John, do you ever get any comments from south business owners if they have been declined, number one, or number two, they've had to, they have been awarded money but has been reduced because there is not enough in the south? Do you ever get any comments from the business owners? Well, I, you know, I work just as hard to make my business good and be successful, and yet, there's all this money that, in the north side. Do you ever get comments like that?
I can tell you they do, and I can tell you people come to me and talk about it, because they're frustrated if they need 75,000, but they got 20,000. Well, in some cases, that means they don't get to move forward with the same level of a program that they intended to. And at the same point in time, there have been people that get turned down. That being said, we can't, now all of a sudden, because there's projects on the table, give them a full amount, just because there's money on the table, when we've been turning people down, and some people get nothing. We've got to get an equitable approach to this.
You, you, you see this, maybe not daily, but very often. Just the conversation up here this morning, and I'm assuming we would hear it if, or will hear it in public comment, how can we get this, the VS, period, the versus? We've got this versus that. How can, how can we get that out of the conversation? You're familiar with tiers in other communities. Do they have these, this same type of issue that one area, and they split it? How does that work in other places?
I don't know of another city that has one tiers zone that's split into subareas, that money is segregated like we have it here. That's not to say that there aren't. But in terms of your first question, the board, that was their frustration, is that there's this, all this money sitting in the north. There are very good projects, people coming to them saying, please fund my project, and they have to say no to some very good projects. And so that's, that was largely the discussion at the board. And I will say, this issue has come up a couple of times in the past that I'm familiar with, and it was more contentious. In this case, the board voted unanimously for this recommendation. And so I think some of that versus conversation, at least in terms of the board, did not come up this time like it did last time this issue came up.
And I repeat that, Tommy, because, again, when I was president of the tiers board, the people on the tiers board who represented the north, if you will, who lived in the north, agreed during the tiers meeting to fund a project. But when it came time for them to show up at city council meetings and speak towards their support of it, they did not show up and would not speak. So it's one thing when they vote in a tiers board meeting to do it. It was another when it came before city council, because they knew they would get backlash on it.
Well, it just seems to me we, we need to start talking with one another rather than at one another over this issue. We're, we're, we're not competing here. This is, this is for the city of San Angelo.
Yes, but remember, the city council at that point in time made it.
Oh, I know they did, Brenda.
And that's the problem from the beginning.
But I don't, I don't get that sense from this, this council. So maybe, maybe we can take some of the, maybe we can take a little of the heat out of this. To me, this, this shouldn't be a contentious issue. I mean, this is for the, for the entire community.
Because it's already been created, you'll never get away with it. That's the problem. It's just, it's become that.
Maybe this council needs to be willing to bear that heat to try to, to make it as equitable as possible. I'm not sure.
I think what we need to do is work with the citizens in the north and try to make them better understand how to utilize the money, because the issue has come forward, because they're not utilizing the money. And if we can do a better job of educating those folks who live in the north and who are very upset that this conversation's going on, about why it's going on. The funds are there, don't you have something you'd like to do to your project? Look at the number of businesses on that entire north corridor. There's lots of businesses and lots of buildings that could use some improvement. And I think it, we, the city, would benefit from that. It is a highly trafficked corridor. And I think there was a belief that when the Texas Bank was built, which was a dramatic improvement to that corner, again, the thought was that more would happen with that. What has happened, and they're very proud of it, is the number of new bank accounts that they've been able to create has been dramatic. And I know Mark McLaughlin, when they were discussing it, kept saying, I believe the citizens in the north deserve an opportunity to have a bank in the north. And people kept saying to him, they'll never do it, they're not going to come there, forget it, it's going to be a disaster. Well, they're very proud of what has happened with that bank. So there are things that can be done, and things that can be improved. The streetscape program on the north is what, a two-block area now? And then there's nothing. And maybe it's three blocks, and then there's nothing. The streetscape, if it continued to be improved up there, could make a big difference, perhaps. Is that my three-minute warning?
You've been warned.
Shut up, Brenda.
Brenda, I didn't want to say, I didn't want to say anything, but yeah, I'm afraid it is.
That was brave of Julia, oh my goodness.
Lucy?
I just had one question. And I don't know if you know the answer to this, but have they, have any north-side businesses been rejected when they applied for the funds?
No, and in fact, I wanted to address one comment that's been made a couple of times about education. And I mentioned the Economic Development Staff, particularly Shannon Scott, who's no longer here, but she did an educational component a couple of years ago, and hand-delivered pamphlets to every business on the north side. And over the last two years, we've seen, we funded $1.2 million in north projects. And so I just don't want there to be the misconception that there aren't projects coming in from the north. In fact, we funded more north projects than south projects.
Yes, because you have the money.
It's just that we spend all the money in the south, and we don't have any left. And even spending 1.2 million on north projects in the last two years, we've still got $2 million sitting there waiting. And so that's part of the frustration of the board and why they moved forward this recommendation.
We just need to make one continual effort and one big effort to really educate. And then we can bring it back and talk about it. And it doesn't mean we won't support some level of doing it, we'll see. But we need to work hard on educating and making sure we have gotten people's attention in terms of what their opportunities are. Stephen, did you want to, since we're not doing a motion on this, because we don't need a motion, we will open it up for public comment.
I'm the mayor, city councilman, I'm Stephen Brown. I'm a member of the tiers board, appointed by the Tom Green County Commissioners Court. I don't know where to start. Oh, Michael and Rick, y'all are a lot grayer in the last 20 years, at least the 27. I don't have any hair, you still got yours. I think the best way to start is from the beginning. When tiers were created, y'all, it was one zone. Personality and politics made it two. That's not San Angelo, we're all San Angelo. Tiers was created to enhance the tax base for the city and the county, and to mitigate and to stop deterioration of blight and dilapidated structures. Frankly, the tiers board is frustrated, I am. And you see by the motion that was made and recommended to you unanimously to combine the funds. We can't fund the south projects without going through that three-force deal. So we just said, let's fisher cut bait, let's see what they want to do. But I think you need to go back and do a little history. One of the reasons that the south is out of money is because of the notable project we've done downtown for landscaping and streets and lighting. And that doesn't enhance necessarily the tax base, but it benefits the whole town. Let's assume that, that street project that's been done downtown, and the landscaping, all the pretty stuff, let's assume it was done in the north. The north would be out of money now. Why? Because the south is paying back the city, the almost $2 million over the next few years. We paid, you paid off about half of it. When we did the street project, you borrowed money from the city's general fund, or what some fund, and the south's paying it back. So that's why the south's out of money right now. We don't lack for projects in the north. As John said, we've spent a million-two over the last few years. And you don't have, you don't have an issue with having projects come to the board. Once you have an issue that we're out of money, and a town hall meeting is great, but it's not going to change the fact, guys and girls, that we're out of money in the south. So why not put it all together and not have a south and a north? Let's have a San Angelo. I've talked to the county judge, and the judge concurs in the motion that was made by the board. He says, we're here to enhance the tax base and stop deterioration of blight of our commercial facilities. So I certainly recommend that y'all consider that and come up with a solution, because if you don't, we're going to be right back here next week, next month. We're going to recommend funding south projects out of north money. At least I'm going to be, and I bet you the rest of the board is too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen. Any further public comment? Go ahead and state your name again, please.
I'm Bria Burke.
You can bring the microphone down, so you can talk better. There you go.
I'm not a professional at this.
That's okay.
So I'm Bria Burke, again. I just have a question. So how were the borders determined?
There was a process, because when you try to create a tiers, you have to go through and start to define the areas, and then look at the amount of residential that's in there versus non-residential, because it's very specific in terms of percent of residential versus non-residential. So the state requires, and that's the reason it costs money, and that's the reason Downtown San Angelo Inc. had to come up with $30,000, because we had to hire somebody to go through and start the work on what that tiers, the tiers would be, north versus south. So that's how it was created, and it had to be done by a professional, had to be pre- So that's how it was created, and it had to be done by a professional, had to be presented to the state of Texas, as these are the defined areas.
The reason why I ask is because my address is North Chadburn, but I'm in the south tiers by like 50, 50 feet south, and it's on North Chadburn. So that was my curiosity, is how that was determined, because, and I mean, you know, yeah, it just makes sense that it would be all one funding. And I'm not sure how you, my other question was like, how do you get to the north people to, just order, like, walk up to them and say, hey, we have these programs?
We'll be doing some block walking.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's my question.
Thank you for being here today. You've been patient with us, and, and we appreciate you being here and asking comments. But the decision, when it was made to determine the north versus the south, they went through two or three different scenarios and looking, because if you look at that map, it kind of has these funny little things on it. And, and again, it's depending on residential versus whatever, and then, but anyway, it had to be approved.
This is more of an interest as a citizen than a battle between whether I get money or not. I'm just curious about how it's all laid out. So thank you for letting me.
Glad you're here.
Be part of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Tom Mauer. I am a member of the tiers board. My view, I think the best thing that can be done for the tiers board is to not have a north and a south, to have the fund. And then the tiers board, it's our responsibility to look at the projects and to determine what our projects should be funded and what shouldn't. Maybe we need more regulation in the tiers board to do a better job of that, if that's the case. But this business of north and that, and south, once Shannon was out of the picture, the south was handicapped already. And so since that time, it's been a north versus south. The way to get rid of it is get rid of north and south and keep the money in the fund and have the tiers board with proper regulation that we can make the proper decisions for funding projects when it's needed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Yolanda Franco, and I am the proud owner of Western Sky Steakhouse on the north side. I want to tell you all my story. So in 2017, I received tiers money. I did it because we had a customer that would get out of her car, because we looked so ugly. We looked ugly. As a matter of fact, they thought we were a strip joint. So we decided to redo our building and whatnot. And it, it helped my business immediately, just changing the facade. And I thank the tiers board for it. It helped me a lot. Not only did it help me, it helped me save money to do the inside. So if you haven't been there, this is a little plug for me. Come and see us, we are very beautiful. So, on the inside and the out. But my fear is, if we do pull the money together, which I totally understand, I understand the logic, but my fear is, if we pull the money together, we all know how downtown, everyone downtown with the scape, with the landscaping that y'all have all done, the city has done and everything, my fear is that there won't be any money when I apply and when my neighbor applies and when, and these people are low-income people. I mean, they need the money. You know, we are trying to look beautiful. We have, I've talked to a lot of residents in the north side, and I think that, you know, keeping it divided, you know, it is not a popular choice. And it's not, I'm not being contentious about it, I'm not saying we need to be a, you know, them against us, north against south. I'm not saying that. I just think that because, you know, there's so much going down, and the people downtown, obviously, they have more financial means behind them. You know, the little lady next to me that has a burrito place, she's getting ready to move across the street, they don't have that. So I think that if you're consideration to keep it separate, you know, if you would consider that, I think that that would help the north. And I think that you're on the right road to doing a town hall meeting, walking, you know, because these people don't understand. I've talked to them. They don't understand it. They don't understand that, you know, they don't trust people. And not that they don't trust them, but they're going, okay, what's the catch? That's what they're saying. What's the catch? You know? Is that my time?
Ignore it, it's just going off.
Do I need to stop? I can talk as long as you, Brenda.
I'll take you on, we'll see.
But that's, they're, they're going, what's the catch? What, what is, what, you know, they're not going to give me free money. That's what they're saying. You know, so an explanation is going to help. Now, I will do my part, being on the north side, to rally all these people up to come to this town hall meeting.
We'll utilize you, because I think your voice and, and because that is where your business is, you can help us get people to the meeting that might not otherwise come, because they'll say it is the city of San Angelo, and they won't come because of that. So I'm going to need you to really work with us to get a lot of people there to talk about all of this.
Okay. Yeah, and I, and I will. I will definitely do my part, but I just ask that you make a consideration to keep the money divided. Thanks a lot.
Can I ask her a question?
Yes, go ahead.
Before you leave, young lady? Before you come back?
You had already thrown me under the bus, but go ahead.
So are you open for breakfast?
We do not open for breakfast, because we, I can't get up better.
So with that in mind, your restaurant would be a good place to have a town hall meeting in the morning, so we don't do lunch and dinner and interfere with other ones like next Tuesday or something.
You do happy hour.
Do what?
We have a full bar, but it won't be open, but yes.
So I don't want to have a meeting, a town hall, and you and I have talked about this, I don't want to do it at lunch and dinnertime and, and you look at those. So, you know, number one, we're looking for somewhere to have it. I suggest, strongly suggest, a morning meeting. And we, everybody kind of knows where you're at, so I do want to throw you under the bus as the target spot to maybe have one in the next week or two.
I, I'll be willing to host it, it's not a problem. Just let me know.
I appreciate this, are we going to have snacks?
Onion reeds for breakfast, okay?
Bring burritos.
We'll take care of that, thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Mayor, Council, my name is Del Velazquez, I'm the Executive Director for Downtown San Angelo. I have been on the tiers board as a non-voting member for nine years. So I've seen the ins and outs of what we're talking about today, and I want to share some thoughts. For one thing, relative to the south, the funding that is accumulated through the tiers fund is statewide requirement that 30%, I believe, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, John, but I believe 30% is the fund number that is supposed to be spent on public funds. And, and traditionally, we've not kept up with that particular mandate.
What do you mean, for infrastructure issues?
For infrastructure, right, for public improvement projects. That is the requirement through the tiers, when the tiers fund was set up, through, by the state, not by the city of San Angelo. The city of San Angelo is who determined the north and south, as we've already discussed. The other thing about the south, and, and I bring that up because I heard a comment that the reason the south is out of money is because of the public funds that are being spent on the improvements for downtown, which is not totally accurate. Number two, and this is inherent for every community in the United States of America, when a city was founded, all of the city government, and in our case, the county government, and guess what, churches, especially in the south, were known as the Bible Belt. Churches were established in the downtown area. That, that's all we knew. That's all that was around. And so inherently, we have a lot of non-taxable property in the downtown south area, south zone. Downtown San Angelo, part of our requirement, back to the city, is to track and monitor all the vacant and underutilized buildings. We do that yearly. And there, I'm going to probably get this wrong, because I know there's been some demolitions, but there's about 340-something buildings in the central business district. When we started, or when I started in 2007, as the Executive Director, we were at about 110 vacant buildings. Today, we're down to about 52. But still, the taxable percentage of buildings and properties, non-taxable, is about 46.2% of properties in the central business district do not pay taxes. So that's another impact that has our, our imbalance in terms of the funds between the two zones. I just want to reiterate again, it's a one-zone, folks, it's not split. We decided that on our own. Thank you. If you have any questions?
No, that's it. Stephen, you can only speak once.
We can't redo, it wasn't, all right. With that, I think, do we need to take a vote from the council?
No, we're good, we're good direction.
Come on up, Adrian.
Senior Chang's coming.
Come on.
My name is Adrian, I have a business. Okay, I have a business in North San Angelo called Senior Chang's. I'm really excited about the town hall, I think that is great, I think that's what needs to happen. People need to be, I hope that we can rally enough people where the conversation's going to be had.
If we need to do two, will you host one as well?
It's not big enough, but I would, I would definitely take people in, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. It's nice weather.
Parking lot is big enough, yes. I guess, I wanted to talk about, like, I understand the whole is one thing and it became political. My fear is that if we do just create it as one again, I don't think the politics stop. It's just, we're going to say that, we fixed it this way, but there's still going to be politics that continue on within boards and friends, and all that stuff happens, it's the ugly truth. So I don't, I don't believe that that's a fix to it. My fear is, there's a lot of questions that I have, and I'm like, I wish I had more information on like who the people who receive the tiers is, how many people have received it multiple times? Because I know there's developers who understand how this works, they see the benefits to it, which is, when I moved my business from, uh,
Howard?
Right, on Vamberen to North San Angelo, tiers was the reason. I was able to see the impact that would have, like, financially for me, that I would have equity in my building immediately if I just took on this project, and the city was going to help me. So I see San Angelo, uh, south part, the downtown area, a lot of the developers are making, I mean, they've done a great job with downtown. I'm not saying it's not being used wrong, it's, it's, the downtown area looks great, but North San Angelo's still not getting it done yet. And if we're starting to see an impact, they said we've done 1.2 million dollars in the last two years. That's great, I wonder what it was before. So based on that number, we would fall short already with people still, and there's, and I've talked to the same people, they don't understand how it fully works yet, they think there's issues, the what ifs. So I think that number could continue to grow. And if we took the funds right now and said, all right, here's 1 million here, here's 1 million here, I think we would eventually run out of funds as well. And I think we need those funds to incentivize people to take on projects in North San Angelo. So I'm advocating for North San Angelo because, not because it's north versus south, it's not that for me. Like, I travel, I do business in Downtown San Angelo, love to eat down there, but I also travel North San Angelo a lot, and residential areas are growing like crazy in North San Angelo, and the businesses are starting to go there, but they haven't yet. And I fear that if you take away that, those funds, that would have impacted other people to develop there that, or to rehab, then it just slows the growth of what's going to happen down there. So I won't get into the, saying that the tiers funds is the reason the south ran out, because I don't believe that the way it was. I think it was text dot funds that were used for the downtown area.
A combination of funds. It came from multiple resources, and one was a grant, yes.
Was tiers a part of that?
Tiers was a part of it, Costa DC was a part of it.
Okay.
It was multiple sources.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, well, anyhow, but that's, that's the reason I don't want to see it separate into big one, because how much of it's going to be used in the downtown district, and how much of it's really going to be used there? And then it turns into more people applying. I'm sure that there's more people applying for the total funds that are being done than we're able to allocate, like, to give out to people. And then, then the politics coming back, who's going to get more, who's going to get less? I don't think that part of it goes away. I think we should keep it split. I think the funds should not go back to if, I think the 2 million dollars should not be split.
We have a lot of work we need to do.
Yeah, anyways.
And we'll count on you to help us get it done, okay?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you, Adrian.
Mayor, we have our direction.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good. One last comment.
Suzy Smith, and I'm in Larry Miller's district. And the question I have is, is this not part of, you know, when, when you run as a city council person, that you're running to advocate for the area that you represent? And so would that not be up to the city council member to kind of, you know, take the ball and run with it for the area that we're talking about? And?
And they're going to help us do this.
Yes, and I think that the discussion that has, you know, developed and what he shared, that we're moving in the right direction on that to get it. But, but that was just the question that came to me, isn't that what you all run for, to advocate for your area?
Thank you, Suzy. All right, we have direction, and so at this point, we will move into closed session. Executive session on the provision of Government Code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, Subchapter D. Exceptions to Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under The Following Sections. Section A, 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding One, 2.3762 Acres, Fisher &amp; Miller Survey 0173, Abstract 0205. And Two, 17.583 Acres, Lot 9D, Block 2, Section 9A, Red Arroyo Hills Edition. And then B, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding... You guys, I'm trying to talk, please. Consultation With Attorney Regarding Contract For Judicial Services At Municipal Court. We are now adjourned for our closed session. At 11:48 a.m., we will call the council meeting of March 15th back to order. We owe, item eight on the agenda is to follow up on administrative issues and consider items discussed in executive session as item A. And Tommy, do you have an announcement, please?
Yes, Mayor, I would make a motion that we approve the contract for judicial services at the municipal court.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tom, by Harry? Any public comment on the item? With none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, it passes 6-0. Announcements and consideration of future agenda items, are there any?
Mayor, do you want to? Just one thing, our strategic priority setting workshop, I'm looking at, I'll, I'll coordinate with y'all, but we're looking at, at April, the 11th through the 15th, or last year, we did it in May?
Yes, we need to do it in May.
Okay, we'll schedule for May.
April's too early.
We'll coordinate with all of you then, so.
Yeah, it's too early.
Okay, good deal.
All right, with that, may I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make.
And any public comment concerning that? With none, may we vote? All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 11:49 a.m. on March the 15th.